Good morning, everyone. I'll ask folks to go ahead and take their seats. And I'm going to call to order our regularly scheduled meeting of Committee the Whole. My name is Elizabeth Glidden. I'm the Chair of this committee. And we are joined today by a quorum of our members, which include councilmembers Gordon, Conno, Reich, Bender, Andrew Johnson, Yang, Quincy Goodman, and Paul Misano. And just to alert folks, we had a number of expected absences today. But we know that our colleagues have read the agenda and are paying attention because we have a lot of business today. It's going to be a very exciting meeting. But just in light of that, I'll urge both my colleagues and presenters, just to respect, we do have a lot of very important presentations. We'll make our way through them one by one, but we know each one has importance to our work at the city. First, we have three items on our consent agenda. I will go ahead and read them. They are, first of all, setting a public hearing for August 13th, 2014, in this committee to consider the appointment of Spencer Kronk, who has been nominated by the mayor and then referred from the Executive Committee to the position of City Coordinator. And this would be for a two-year term to run January 2nd, 2014, to January 2nd, 2016. Item number two is to consider, and I will make this motion to approve, the appointment of Scott Neal to one of the positions on the Audit Committee for a term to run through January 2nd, 2018. And that information is in your packet. And finally, item number three is an item that originated from our work in setting, as a city council, goals, values, and strategic directions for this term in the city. And as part of that work, we directed staff to assist the city council and mayor in working on definitions for equity and racial equity. And those definitions are also part of what we will approve today and move forward. So I will move approval of all three items. And if anyone would like to take anything off for discussion, you are free to do so. We are using speaker management. I'm not seeing anyone do so, so on approval, please say aye. Aye, opposed. And those items are approved. Next, we turn to a list of discussion items. And the first item is a presentation from, and I'll urge the presenter to go ahead, come forward, that is a presentation regarding our 2014 Urban Scholars Project. This is a report, and there are recommendations within. What we are doing today is receiving and filing this report. And I'll just note to folks, we wanted to make sure that we took the presentation because our urban scholars are here for a time-limited amount of time. We want to make sure that we hear from them, they're part of this work. But the work then is going through some other processes to be reviewed by NCEC, NCR, and then we'll come back to the city council at some point later this year. So I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Rubador to introduce the work, and then we're going to hear from some presenters.
Chair Glidden and councilmembers, good morning. I'm David Rubador, Director of the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department. I have the pleasure of being joined by Manir Von and Michael Ranguala, who will be doing the presentation today. But I did want to spend just a minute to cue this up. The Urban Scholars Program is a really important program for the city about helping people and youth be able to learn and job skills and be able to move forward in life in a professional manner. And the Urban Scholars Program basically picks a project every year to work on. And this year, they chose to do a youth-focused group around the Blueprint for Equitable Engagement, which is an initiative that the NCR department is spearheading. The Blueprint for Equitable Engagement is about engaging community on how to make sure that the city's engagement systems, basically neighborhood organizations, our boards and commissions, and our city outreach work, is equitable in its approach and inclusive of all voices in the community. So the Urban Scholars have picked this particular project in order to help inform the city around that. As Chair Glidden has mentioned, this is a receiving file today, so these recommendations will be taken in by the NCR department, along with a number of other focus groups that we're holding around the city over the next couple of months. It is our intent to work with the NCEC Neighborhood Community Engagement Commission and report back to the full council by December 1st of this year with recommendations that come from this. So this work is definitely connected to that. Before I hand it over, I also wanted to just do a quick thank you to Director Corbell of the Civil Rights Department and her staff for supporting the Urban Scholars Program. It is, like I said, a very important program for our city and for the youth in our city. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Michael and Manir.
Thank you. And as they're coming forward, come on up. I just wanted to acknowledge, I think we are joined by all of the Urban Scholars who have been working on this project, I believe. And if you're in the Urban Scholars Program, would you maybe mind raising your hand or something so we can know that you're here? I want to say thank you for your work. And we are going to have a more official recognition program, a couple of different things that we're going to do to recognize Urban Scholars and their work to help the city on August 15th. So thank you very much for being here. And we'll turn it over to you.
Good morning, Chair Glidden, councilmembers. My name is Michael Ranguala.
And I am Manir Von. Before we begin our presentation, we'd like to thank each of you for taking the time to hear our policy recommendations this morning.
An overall theme of our policy recommendations is to foster communication, build relationships, and create access into boards and commissions. Here, I'll read through the policy recommendations we have set forth. First, have all development boards and commissions to conduct, at minimum, an annual engagement session with youth organizations adhering to the city's core principles of community engagement. Examples of youth organizations include Youth Congress, Youth Prize, or Youth Care Minnesota. Second, have all development boards and commissions develop and submit an annual report to city council focused on community engagement activity, diversity, and inclusion that explicitly frames ongoing youth engagement and participation. Third, modify the Equitable Solutions Guide to Engaging Boards and Commissions to incorporate youth as intentional stakeholders in recruitment, membership, decision-making, and engagement.
The policy recommendations in the slide before are the direct result of the Urban Scholars' assessment of the Guide to Engage in Boards and Commissions within the Blueprint for Equitable Engagement. The Blueprint for Equitable Engagement is a multi-year strategic action plan that was created to ensure that equitable community engagement system within the city of Minneapolis. Within the Guide to Engage in Boards and Commissions, we, as Urban Scholars, noted that the youth perspective and voice was simply not recognized or acknowledged. To resolve this issue, we recommend incorporating the youth as intentional stakeholders within recruitment, membership, as well as the overall decision-making process. We feel that incorporating the youth will help to achieve the city's goal of having the advisor and planning boards and commissions reflect the diversity in the communities in which we serve. We feel that diversity in thought, as well as in perspective, is equal as important as diversity within ethnicity within the city's boards and commissions. The Urban Scholars were challenged with creating policy recommendations that advocated for youth input within the city's boards and commissions. To meet this challenge, Urban Scholars engaged 50-plus youth within the city of Minneapolis. These focus sessions were organized to talk about different topics, such as the youth and their involvement with boards and commissions, as well as their overall knowledge. Thankfully, we were able to engage youth ranging between the ages of 16 and 27. Now, understand that the ages of 16 and 27 are very important to Urban Scholars because we all happen to fall within this age group. As an Urban Scholar, I found myself both privileged and honored to take part in this particular project. Although I am not originally from Minneapolis, I recognize the importance of having the voices and ideas of my friends and colleagues heard today. As Urban Scholars, we took this project as our own and thought about our friends, our neighbors, our colleagues, and anyone who is not here to share their voice on today.
The following are themes that were consistent in all of the focus sessions that we undertook: the need for more communication, access, relationships, and accuracy with youth in the city. This infers that currently there is disengagement with youth in the city. Many youths simply don't know what the boards and commissions are, and the current structure doesn't encourage participation for them. This is concerning because the core principles of community engagement state that public participation seeks out involvement, gives adequate information, and recognizes those who have a right to be involved. Looking at the demographics, there are around 5.4 million people in Minnesota right now. Around 1.3 million of them are baby boomers. Now, this generation is represented on the boards and commissions very well. Now, for millennials, there are around 1.5 million millennials in Minnesota, but there's a huge gap in their representation on the boards and commissions. This is problematic because of the major transition that will happen in the coming years as the baby boomers retire and leave the workforce, and millennials and the following generations will be moving in. It is important to have informed policies that represent youth because the future of youth are the decisions made today. In addition, by 2040, Hennepin County is projected to be around 50% people of color. Similarly, 1 in 4 millennials are people of color. Thus, supporting recommendations that increase youth involvement also promote racial equity and participation. This is congruent with the spirit of One Minneapolis that states disparities are eliminated so all Minneapolis residents can participate and prosper. The term "residents" includes youth. Based upon the themes of communication, access, and building relationships, supporting these recommendations will provide a foundation for the boards and commissions to move forward with the goal of One Minneapolis.
To conclude our presentation, we would like to overview our policy recommendations once more. One, have all development boards and commissions to conduct, at minimum, an annual engagement session with youth organizations adhering to the city's core principles of community engagement.
Second, have all development boards and commissions develop and submit an annual report to city council focused on community engagement activity, diversity, and inclusion that explicitly frames ongoing youth engagement and participation.
And three, modify the Equitable Solutions Guide to Engage in Boards and Commissions to incorporate youth as intentional stakeholders in recruitment, membership, and the overall decision-making and engagement process.
The future of young people, our future, and we, as Urban Scholars who are proud to represent, are the decisions made today. This concludes our presentation, and we open the floor to questions.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that presentation. I had a question, and I put myself in queue, and I know I see one from Councilmember Gordon, and we'll maybe take questions for about, you know, five, seven minutes or so and see what we have. One question that I had was, you used the term "youth," and at one point in the presentation, you talk about the ages that you engaged with as part of your background research, which I think was from ages 16 to 27. And I was just curious, as part of your recommendations, did you think about this kind of under-18 versus over-18 conundrum maybe a little bit, or how did you approach that?
Vice President Glidden, to respond to your question, yes, we did address those who are under the ages of 18, because one thing that we wanted to make sure is that we encompass those who may not be heard within our particular project realm. And in doing so, we wanted to focus on the age group that we're most familiar with. Most of us are between the ages of 18, 27, so therefore, we have a larger knowledge base of the different things and different initiatives that are going on within our age group. However, we feel that these policy recommendations should only be used as a springboard into other community initiatives from NCR to engage those who are under the age of 18.
Okay. Thank you. We do have a couple other folks in queue with questions. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. And I did have a question about the age, so I appreciate Councilmember Glidden kind of drill down on that a little bit. I was also curious about what kind of youth organizations that you looked at. I represent the Second Ward, which includes the University of Minnesota, and a lot of times, what we try to do is make connections to the Student Association there, and there's also a Graduate School Association. So, do you have a list of organizations that you think we should use, and are you providing that for us so that we can kind of run with that?
Yeah. Chair Glidden, Councilmember Gordon, thank you for your question. In the presentation, we mentioned Youth Congress, Youth Prize, Youth Care Minnesota, and there's also Minneapolis Public School Citywide Council. But it's not limited to them. Those are recommendations. So as NCR, as a, they will also be involved in helping to choose, you know, what organizations to. So it's not limited to those, but any youth organization within the age frame that we're looking for is what we were thinking. Does that help?
Yes, that helps, and I appreciate that. And I think a lot of those organizations are a little bit more skewed towards high school than this college group. And I actually think we're going to get some of the most meaningful involvement as people are getting a little bit older, into their twenties and that. And that's really what we're kind of missing some of. And I had another question, something that I considered a long time ago and then backed off of. And I understand Seattle and some cities have done this, where they actually try to set aside and reserve a youth seat on their boards and commissions. And I know that we do have this on some isolated boards and commissions where we say we're going to set aside a seat for somebody under 25, or I don't know where we draw the line necessarily. Did you consider that as a possible recommendation?
Absolutely. Vice President Glidden, Councilmember Gordon, again, thank you for your question. Yes, we did consider that. One of our policy recommendations, in fact, is, number one, have all development of boards and commissions to conduct a minimum annual engagement session with youth organizations. And in doing this, we feel that once they engage with these organizations, they are able to solicit various members to come and join these meetings. And in joining these meetings, we actually proposed that there is some type of survey or something given at the end of the meeting for those members of those groups to actually fill out to see, are they learning from this board and commission? Do they feel involved? Do they feel equally and authentically engaged within the boards and commissions?
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We also have a question from Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to underscore the importance of number three and to really intentionally recruit youth to serve on boards and commissions. And I'm sure you found in your research a number of ways that commissioners are appointed, either through a staff recommendation or through a sort of whole-committee process, and then some boards and commissions where councilmembers themselves appoint someone to represent the ward on that board and commission. And it seems to me that number three would need to incorporate, encapsulate all of those different kind of pathways to serving on boards and commissions. I just wondered if you had any comments about that.
Yeah. Chair Glidden, Councilmember Bender, thank you for your question. One part of our, like, project is, like, the scope is helping to provide the foundation to, for work like that. And with that third recommendation, that's more consistent with, like, language in the guide and adding that to incorporate youth in that language, and definitely wanting to encourage those further steps later on of youth participation, actually on the boards and commissions.
And then also, to build off of Michael's response, we also found that the language within the guide was just not explicit in saying that you have to acknowledge the youth perspective. And we feel that making the language very explicit in saying, this is a guide that people are using, therefore, we have to make sure that our language is explicit in recognizing and acknowledging the youth and their perspectives.
Thank you. And then just quickly, I think, comment more for staff and policymakers here. I would love to see this work extended to all of the ways that we do community engagement. I think you've done such a fantastic job here, and it's a real great starting point for looking at how we can engage youth in all of the different ways that we do community engagement in the city. So thank you so much for all your great work.
All right. And I just want to note, we've been joined by Mayor Betsy Hodges, and she has a question or comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is more a comment than a question, but first, thank you very much for the presentation, and thank you very much for the policy recommendations. I think they're, as folks have been saying, I think they're really useful and valuable. I will also take this moment and this platform to, once again, which I will do again, is ask all of you to consider working for the city and all of you to consider running for local public office someday. The, and that is genuinely meant, by the way, so if you ever want to talk about that, you know how to reach me. The couple things I will add is I had the opportunity to meet with the Youth Congress, I guess it was last week. Time is sort of blurring, but last week, I had the opportunity to meet with the Youth Congress, which I think is one place, you know, especially on the younger age, because folks from eighth grade till their first or second year of college are represented on the Youth Congress. It was a really useful place to go, create some connections with people who are thinking about our city, and they've made some really great policy recommendations, too, working with some of our departments around, for example, tobacco use among young people and sex trafficking. They've had some really great recommendations, policy recommendations for all of us. I think it's also a place to look for some of the members, you know, for people to consider for members of the board and commissions, or to get recommendations from them about people who might be willing or able to serve. And I think another place as well is we now have, I don't know, 20,000 alumni from the Step Up Program, from young people, you know, throughout the city who are familiar now with the city, have done great work here, and can also be a source of, and we've been working with Achieve Minneapolis. This started a couple years ago. I was at the breakfast one morning and thought, we should work with Achieve Minneapolis to put the word out there that there are availabilities on the boards and commissions and get that word out to the alums of the Step Up Program, because I think that's just a great source in general, but that also would, you know, recent alums would be good folks for our boards and commissions. So I just, I offer that as a couple of places where really good work is happening, folks have really good experience. Of course, the Urban Scholar alums would also be a great source for boards and commissions for folks, you know, if we're looking for young adults. And I, you know, I just think it's a really fruitful place to go. The work is really great, and we have a lot to gain, and things will go better when we work with young people and youth and young adults coming up. So thank you very much for the presentation. You guys did a great job, and appreciate these recommendations.
Just to this point again, did you ever consider using that kind of term, or the "youth and young adults" as opposed to the "youth term"? And I just say that because I think sometimes there are perceptions of what's meant by the term. And again, you know, I really appreciate your response, that a lot of you fall into this age group of 18 to 27 and are drawing from those perspectives, but also think it's important to kind of go into that high school years a little bit for some of those perspectives, too.
Thank you, Chair Glidden. Like previously mentioned, the scope of our project in these recommendations are for 18 to 27, because of, at that age, you know, you have voting rights and you're more accountable. But we also considered some of the voices of the high schoolers in one of our focus sessions.
Okay.
But I think that's a great recommendation and insight on using those words, on how to think about how we use those words.
Okay. Well, I don't see more questions, but I just want to say thank you very much. Thanks to the whole team for what I know was many, many weeks of research, different tasks that you all took on to put together what I think is a really focused report, and obviously, one that's resonating with many of us. I know there's just a lot of work that I seem to be seeing and reading about now about how, you know, innovation comes from including that diversity of perspective and all sorts of ways that having that true diversity of perspective is important, including, as you talked about, our changing demographics and millennials and as opposed to the perspective where that's kind of predominant right now in our, in our boards and commissions, which is the baby boomer age. So thank you very much for a really well-put-together report, and I understand that you may be staying for some of the other presentations today, so please, you're welcome to stay as long as you like. And I will move, our action today is to receive and file this report, and so I will move to receive and file. On approval, please say aye. Aye, opposed. And that item is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we are on to the next item, which is an update on what we, has been termed "Equitable Solutions for One Minneapolis." This is an update that was directed pursuant to a staff direction that was made on April 30th, 2014, in a previous committee. And I'm not sure, I know the mayor wanted to make some comment. I wasn't sure if it was opening comment now or comment later. I just, what would you like, Mayor? Okay. All right. Well, as Jay is getting ready, then, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm happy to make comments now. I didn't know if you had things you wanted to say as well. But I think folks are familiar that we had a whole bunch of policy directions and staff directions that the policy work group that was formed was charged with parsing through and sorting through. I've been happy and honored to chair that policy work group. And a while back, we came to a study session, and we said, as we parsed through it, we divided it into three different buckets. And then in each of those, we said, what work is ready to go? And we brought forward a list of those things. Some of those are still in process. Some of those items that we brought forth to that study session are still in process, the Target Market Program, a couple other things like that. But there are some items that are being brought forward today that Mr. Strobel will describe, that Council Vice President, uh, Lilligrin, Council Vice President Glidden can, you know, speak to as well. But I think what is being presented is, today is the work that's internal to the city, work that we do on our own behalf, and that we want to be able to move forward, and move forward in a way that has expectations for the enterprise, that this work will simply, you know, will just continue to move forward in ways that we have given direction, and it's the place that we need to start. It is the, it is the source of much work from many staff members over many, many months at the direction of council. And I just want to give great thanks, for example, to Mr. Strobel, who's been doing great work, to Ms. Corbell, who's been doing great work, to Mr. Rubador, to Ms. Francois. There's a, there's a whole set of really great folks who've been putting some of these products and some of these policies and some of these procedures together, and I just want to give great thanks to them. The work is evolving and moving forward as we all give consideration to it. The one thing I wanted to mention is that the policy work group is continuing to work on teeing up a racial equity action plan and a process that we can do and work with with the new city coordinator when he starts. And so that work will be ongoing and help give shape and direction and form to many of the other things that had been brought forward, that the policy work group sorted through and has been forwarding to the, you know, to the Equity Action Plan process and to the city coordinator. So again, many thanks to the folks who've been working so hard on this, particularly you, Council Vice President Glidden, and look forward to this presentation from Mr. Strobel.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Strobel.
Good morning. Chair Glidden, members of the council. My name is Jay Strobel, and I'm currently serving as the interim city coordinator for the city of Minneapolis. I'm joined today by, the presentation will be partly on my behalf. In addition to that, I'll be joined today by Velma Corbell, who will be speaking with regards to the racial equity assessment. Patience Ferguson, who will be speaking with regard to the recruiting and hiring work. David Rubador, who will be speaking with regards to the boards and commissions work. In addition to a few opening comments that I have, I'll also be speaking broadly to the procurement efforts in this area. As Chair alluded to, today's Equitable Solutions update is based on staff direction requests from the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee on April 30th, 2014. As noted in the RCA, this work also has its origin stemming from an August 2012 council Given Minneapolis's significant disparities in areas such as employment, health, education, and others, this work is clearly based on community need. As an institution, as the mayor just commented, we have first decided to focus our attention on the interim and others, this work is clearly based on community need. As an institution, as the mayor just commented, we have first decided to focus our attention on the enterprise practices and the culture change that needs to take place within the city of Minneapolis, before turning our attention on other sets of strategies and working with our partners more broadly on the community efforts that we're likely to undertake. In terms of an additional point that I wanted to make, and as the mayor made in her opening comments, the four elements that we're going to be discussing today, and the status of those are in various stages of development and implementation. As with most city programs and efforts, you should expect an ongoing evolution of this work, just as we heard from the group before, the Urban Scholars, they've got some thoughts and feedback already on some of the preliminary documents that have been developed around this work. It's also important to note that there's been significant enterprise involvement in all of the areas that we're going to talk about today. We intend on these to be an enterprise application, and as these get developed and as these evolve, we do want to engage the enterprise in the development of this. So, while there are a few folks who have been leading some of the efforts, we do know that this is enterprise effort, and for the long term, for the culture change that we seek, that we will need everybody's involvement, both policy and staff. In terms of the first area that I want to provide an update on, it's the area of procurement. This is one of the areas that's clearly under development, a lot is going on in this area. The, one of the immediate outcomes that we're seeking around the procurement area is for the city to have the greater ability to plan, track, and evaluate our small women and minority business inclusion. Today, some of the considerations of this work are that we have significant limitations in terms of our ability to track this information. Some of this is a technology issue, some of this is the way we've set up our accounting, a lot of details that I can even quite understand, but there are significant limitations in terms of how we're, our ability to do this. Another element of this is that we're seeking to improve how best to inform spending decisions. So, when a, when a city employee sits down to make a spending decision, how can we best inform those employees in terms of the choices that they might have, the options that they might have when making those decisions? The going about, the procurement process in the city is not an easy process, and depending on whether you're buying a pencil, or you're trying to secure a large contract, it's not an easy process, and we need to make it easier and help people make informed spending decisions related to this work. Finally, on the supplier side, there's additional opportunities as well. We do have a specific focus, in addition to the others that I've mentioned, around the supplier side for opportunities, there's greater ways that the city can work with our current suppliers, other potential suppliers, for how they can make it known in terms of the opportunities that they might have to be a vendor for the city, and so we need to work with the suppliers as well. I do want to end with a note in terms of that we do have a sponsor group of a number of department leaders working in this area, and we're focused on developing a set of short, mid, and long-term strategies in the areas of policy, people and process, and technology. So, we do plan, at the appropriate time, to come forward in the coming months, in terms of additional recommendations within this procurement area. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Director Corbell.
Thank you, Mr. Strobel, and welcome to Director Corbell.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Mayor, and committee members. My name is Velma Corbell, I'm the Director of Civil Rights for the city of Minneapolis. I am talking about the racial equity assessment this morning. Just as background, for those who may be unfamiliar, a racial equity assessment is an examination of how different racial and ethnic groups will likely be affected by a proposed action or decision. And following on the much-publicized disparities between white people and people of color, the city passed Resolution 2012 R. 456 to consciously address these disparities, so that the city would not unconsciously replicate the decision-making that produced the inequities. Our thinking was that the assessment tool would be used to minimize and perhaps eliminate unintended consequences of proposed policies, institutional practices, programs, plans, initiatives, and budgetary decisions. We thought the racial equity assessment would be more like an environmental impact statement, a fiscal impact report, or a workplace risk assessment, and would be best conducted during the decision-making process, or business process improvement or redesign efforts, but certainly prior to enacting any sort of new proposal. Our hope is that department heads and other senior staff, as appropriate, would use this tool, which again, is an examination process, to inform their decision-making. You will also note on the slide that some of the racial equity assessment and this examination is ongoing. We actually used a pause in our decision-making during the business plan development. The mayor's office also used a racial equity assessment modified in the budgeting process, and there are some departments currently using the pause in their decision-making to really examine the racial equity impact of what their decision is going to have on affected communities. And so, again, this work is beginning implementation, and just wanted to give you an update on where we are today.
Thank you so much. And I think I have next that, I think it's Mr. Rubidore.
Patience.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Ferguson. I apologize. Welcome.
Thank you, good morning, Madam Chair, and good morning to the Council, and good morning to the mayor. I'm Patience Ferguson, I'm Director of Human Resources for the city of Minneapolis. We are, as a department, have been working very diligently in the development of a recruitment and hiring guide that is to be used in our, to integrate our existing practices with the focus on racial equity. And so, I'm here today to inform you of what the status is of our current project, and to also let you know what the next steps will be in implementing the recruitment and in the hiring guide. Currently, we are ready to implement the recruitment and hiring guide, but we do feel it's very important that it is integrated in our existing human resource practices. So, some of the complementary work that we're doing to ensure the success of this guide is using the different tools within the Human Resources Department, and I'd like to just give you some examples of those tools. One is NeoGov, which I've, we've mentioned before, which is a robust applicant tracking system that will help us become a little bit more effective and efficient in our processes, and also provide us with much more robust reporting capabilities. We also are relooking at our new hire orientation process. We think it's very important that people come in to the city and have the tools, the resources that they need to be successful, and also to have the tools and the resources they need to not only be onboarded from a perspective of understanding the city, but also understanding the work and what the expectations are, and how they can engage the different hiring managers, and that they can also have the opportunities to provide feedback to help not only them get more familiar with their work, but also to create that two-way communication process between them and their supervisor. The third area that we're doing to complement, again, the recruitment and hiring guide, is having much more of a focus on leadership development through the program that we're actually piloting now, called Leadership U, but also, we're looking at even more, providing more supervisory training for our hiring managers. Another area that we will be focusing on is really expanding our recruitment, specifically for those positions that are hard to fill and hard to place. Also, we have much more stronger emphasis, not only on the engagement survey, which we've done every other year, but also providing managers additional tools to really support them as they look at the engagement scores, and also use that in their action planning processes. And lastly, another tool that we're, we will be using is a recognition program that we piloted this year. It's an enterprise-wide program called the, it's a star program to really recognize the efforts and celebrate the efforts of all of our employees throughout the entire city. Our desired outcome is to enhance the city's recruitment, hiring, onboarding, and retention of talent, leading to a more diverse and engaged workforce. And our strategies around, specifically with the guide, is around making diversity, inclusion, and racial equity a business goal, shaping the recruitment strategy, also evaluating what the current talent pool is, casting multiple nets, and lastly, holding yourself accountable. We believe that what gets measured is what gets done. The other part in terms of implementation, we recognize that this is, as, as one of my colleagues said earlier, we're about culture change, but culture change can only be enhanced when you give people the tools, the resources, and the training and support. So, we will be working, myself and my team, will be working very closely with all the hiring managers within the city, to provide them the tools, the resources, the training and support to effectively execute the recruitment and hiring guide. This is integrated into the Human Resource Business Plan, and so therefore, it will be part, as I said before, part of our HR business planning process. Thank you. I will now turn it over to David Rubidore.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ferguson, and welcome, David Rubidore, a second time.
Madam Chair, and committee members, again, good morning. David Rubidore, Director of the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department with the city. Just wanted to give you a quick update today, also on the Guide to Engaging Boards and Commissions. As you are aware, that the NCR Department, as well as in collaboration with the City Clerk's Office, has been working diligently to make sure that our Boards and Commissions really reflect the diverse nature of our, of our community, that our Boards and Commissions are best utilized when they really reflect everybody that lives in the city and can provide advice and counsel to the council, city council, as you are making your decisions. The Guide to Engaging Boards and Commissions is a tool to comprehensively support staff and the recruitment of membership to our Boards and Commissions, and this is still in development. We are still in the process of fine-tuning this, this document. As was demonstrated earlier in the meeting today with the, with the Urban Scholars' presentation, we are doing, the NCR Department is doing the Blueprint for Equitable Engagement currently, which is, consists of holding focus groups across the city around engaging community about how the city's engagement work can be more equitable in its approach, and this focuses around neighborhood organizations, it focuses on Boards and Commissions, and it focuses on, on how departments can be more equitable in their approach when they're engaging community. As was demonstrated earlier, the Urban Scholars' recommendations that came forward, we're getting feedback around how we can make sure that the guide is the most effective and can be best utilized from the community, and as we incorporate that into our work, we plan on presenting the final recommendations back to the Council by December 1st of, of this year. This is also, I should also know that this is part of a larger body of work that we are conducting, and again, working in collaboration with the City Clerk's Office around Boards and Commissions. Not only is the Guide to Engaging Boards and Commissions underway, but we are also working on an amendment to the Open Appointment Process Ordinance, which would change the way that the city council actually does appointments to our advisory Boards and Commissions, really from the lens of equity. We are also in the process of standardizing operations within our Boards and Commissions in order to have some more continuity in the work that they're doing, developing a training guide and an orientation session for both staff and new members as they come on, which would include a racial, an introduction into the racial equity assessment work, and again, with this work planning on being completed by December 1st of this year. With that, I believe it concludes our presentation today.
Thank you so much. I didn't know, Mr. Strobel, did you want to come and have any last words, or?
Chair Glidden, members of the Council, Mayor. As you can see, part of the reason why we did the presentation the way we did is to reflect the fact that there's been numerous players involved in the leadership of this work, ongoing development. As you can also see, some of the elements that we've been working on are ready to go, already have been in use in some cases, and other areas are still evolving and developing and will be ready to go in the near future.
All right, well, thank you very much, and we now will take questions and comments. We, and Councilmember Gordon has a question or comment.
Thank you very much, and it's mostly a comment. I just really appreciate all the work that's gone into this so far, really appreciate the, the mayor's involvement, the leadership from the Coordinator's Office, and the Civil Rights Department, and all the players who were involved. I'm very impressed. I'm a little bit giddy, thinking about how far we've come since 2012, and having no idea what, you know, a toolkit, or assessment, or framework, or filter that would actually look at racial equity, what it would look like, what it would be. We were a little lost, even though we were clinging as best we could to Seattle's coattails, thinking maybe they had something to offer us, and we certainly, I think, learned and used that, but I think we've come up with something that fits Minneapolis better. I think it's great that it's actually already happening. The interesting thing, I think, that's happened is just by the Council saying, this is important to us, city leaders embracing it, saying, we think we should care about this, too, and clearly, the residents of Minneapolis adopting and running with it, and saying, yes, equity absolutely matters to us. The culture shift is already happening. We have people thinking about racial impacts about decisions where they never would have even considered it in the, in the, in the past, and I think this is incredibly significant. I really appreciate how the assessment has, has grown and matured and, and taken shape, and I really appreciate the, the whole idea right now behind the toolkit is, here's a toolkit that we're going to provide to departments, so that they can have some resources to use if they choose to, and I think what we're finding is, people will, will choose to, and they will want to. Of course, we have to be accountable, of course, we have to measure if we've really made progress a year, or two years, you know, is the workforce changing, are we actually spending more money that's going to minority-owned businesses, and those kinds of things, but I think we're making, making enormous progress. Since we kind of started looking at this again this year, I've had an opportunity to get more involved and go to more of the committee meetings, and the Equitable Solutions Group, and serving on the, on the policy board with the mayor, to see the kind of work that's going on. I've also had the opportunity in my office to try the assessment guide firsthand, and it does sort of just become, just asking the questions, get you generating about it, and understanding. We're, we're working on a staple foods ordinance improvement, and really, it all started because we thought, we want to get more fresh foods to more areas of the city, so that we can break some of the health disparities that are going on, but then we also started bumping up against, oh, a lot of the small corner stores are actually run by minority owners, people of color, how this can impact them, and what kind of resources are we going to need to make sure that all of a sudden, we're not putting people out of business, that we didn't want to put out of business, and we're actually supporting them. So, it's created a great dialogue in our office, trying to weigh these factors, and it's been very, very helpful. I think the same has happened when I hear discussions about other departments who've tried to look at this and think about this issue. It certainly gets complicated, and it certainly leads to some interesting discussions and some dialogue, and I think it's about time that we have those discussions and we start thinking about those issues, and so this is, this is wonderful. I know that when we passed the resolution to create the toolkit, we said, develop and implement a toolkit, so I think it's just, it's fully appropriate that we're implementing it, but it's fully appropriate that the Council is keeping a close eye on it and wants to be very involved and engaged, and I look forward to seeing more progress coming forward. One of the things I think I heard today was that we are going to have training for hiring people, that we are going to be looking at the hiring bias that's coming, and we're really going to be drilling down on those things, so I'm very excited to see how HR's guide gets implemented and it unfolds, and I think that that's wonderful. So, hopefully, you're picking up a little of my enthusiasm and support for this, and I really congratulate you on how far we've come, and look forward to seeing how far we can go in the next few months. And once we get this new coordinator on board, I think this is going to have to be one of the top two or three things that they can help, help us work on and, and work with, and I'm counting on you all to help with that transition. Thank you for all the time.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon, and I have a few comments, and then I'll go ahead and move the staff directions, as I'm not seeing other folks in queue. I did want to recognize, you know, Mr. Strobel acknowledged that there's been a leadership team, but I really want to thank all the department heads, because there has been engagement with all of the department heads in the city on this work on multiple occasions. This work has been brought forward to get their input, has been discussed at department head meetings, there's been individual engagement, and I think, again, this is, this is how we work in the city, is we use the expertise of department head leadership to help evolve our work. meetings, there's been individual engagement, and I think, again, this is how we work in the city, is we use the expertise of department head leadership to help evolve our work, especially on enterprise work like this. So I want to thank all the department heads for their interest and questions and engagement. And I also, we hadn't yet, there's one person I just want to make sure we acknowledge, and that is the Mayor's Policy aide, Diane Halsey, that has played a really important coordinating role here to help the work move forward, make sure that we're working on all cylinders and assisting the City Coordinator's Department with that, as well as being a great assist, of course, to the mayor in this being one of her policy priorities, and so thank you for your help. You know, from my perspective, I just, I really think that this presentation shows substantial work and movement forward, and so I just want to say, thank you, thank you for what I think is focus shown in the presentation, an enterprise approach, which I think was also important for us to understand at the council, how things work with this enterprise approach, and that there's been, as I said, department engagement, and I think that's also very important to the council, to understand that department engagement, and recognition within the presentation that evolution will continue to occur. And that's what happens. You know, we hire department heads to help lead work, and then we expect that they will help develop programs and policies and practices to help support these goals that we set, and I think that's what this shows. I think the presentation also showed us a little bit more than maybe prior presentations, that there really are a set of supports that are being created in these priority internal service areas, and that it's not like a magic guide or something that's the, you know, magic bullet, but it's really a system of supports. And so I appreciate that approach and that it kind of helps spell out that picture a little bit better, and I think that at least has been helpful to me. I think it's been helpful to some of my colleagues, especially, again, since at this council level, you are seeing a lot of interest, a lot of engagement, and as policymakers, we set goals, we set direction and expectations, and I think the expectation we're setting here is that we want the work to continue to develop and be implemented and evolve. But also, we expect then that the staff will take that, and with something as big as this, and we actually have another item for it, that is another culture change, and I, just as a little heads up, it's Mr. Dahl, but, working on open data, but culture change is difficult, and make no bones about it, we are a bureaucracy here, and culture change takes work. There are not magic bullets that make that happen, and we need to utilize the expertise of all the folks within our system to make that work move forward. And so I really appreciate that we are, I think, on a track of moving the work forward. So I'm going to go ahead and move the staff directions, which include to receive and file this update on the work, to direct the City Coordinator, to continue to work with department heads, staff and key stakeholders, to develop and implement the components of Equitable Solutions for One Minneapolis, and also direct that future council actions move forward to the reporting committees of those departments that move the work forward, and really, that's just acknowledging that we have some rules within the council that direct how those reports happen, just because I know sometimes there's confusion about how work when there's enterprise issues moves forward. So I will move approval of all of those directions, and I'm just looking around. On approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that item is approved. Thank you all for your work and for making the presentation. Next, we have, again, a major item coming forward, and we're just going to pause and let Ms. Traver come up to the podium, but this is an item regarding our 2015 medical plan benefits. Just as we're getting set up, a refresh to our committee is, we have already had two presentations this year, 2014, about what type of insurance system we might seek for 2015 and moving forward. We did authorize issuance of an RFP as part of our actions, and we have a report back here. Ms. Traver.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Glynn, council members. I'm Joyce Traver, Benefits Manager for the City of Minneapolis. I'm just going to give you an update on that, a request for proposal process, and bring forward our recommendations for medical insurance for As background, as Chair Glynn stated, a request for proposal was issued in May. In addition to providing many of the traditional healthcare services, we also included requirements that the successful proposer provide engaging health and wellness solutions, transparency solutions to assist members in making informed healthcare choices. By transparency, we really mean providing information on provider cost and quality. We also wanted a carrier who would provide narrow networks that could effectively manage member healthcare and produce cost savings, and we asked for both fully insured and self-insured funding options. The city received proposals from Medica, our current carrier, from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota Health Partners, and Preferred One. The self-insured proposals reflected potential savings over Medica's initial renewal. Their renewal quote was close to a 5% increase for 2015, and they were in line, those self-insured quotes were in line with the savings we estimated we might achieve by moving to self-insurance. In addition to these self-insured proposals, Medica and Health Partners also proposed fully insured rates that would guarantee savings comparable to those that we estimated under self-funding. A team of city human resources and finance employees, along with union business agents, reviewed the proposals and came forward, and we are coming forward now with a recommendation. It's joint recommendation from finance and human resources. And that recommendation is that proper city officials be authorized to enter into a fully insured contract with Medica effective January 15. It would be a three-year contract with the option to extend for two additional years. That contract with Medica would result in a 3% premium decrease for 2015 with rate caps of 5% for both 2016 and 2017. In addition to the favorable financials, the evaluation team also considered these other factors, the fact that Medica's financial proposal would provide more stable, fully insured rates over a three-year period than the rates proposed and the rate caps proposed by the other carriers. Also, they are, have entered, Medica's entered into a new relationship with Red Brick. Red Brick is a local company that's really on the forefront of consumer health engagement and behavior change. Medica's also agreed to work with the city to refine that new wellness program and to create a transparency solution that would provide information, that would give members information on provider cost and quality, both before they enrolled for benefits, and also as they make decisions as to which provider to use for certain services. This would also mitigate any disruption caused by moving to a new carrier, disruption as to new providers or new networks, new drug formularies, or a new health management So assuming that approval is received to, at committee of the whole, it would be referred to Ways and Means Budget Committee and then to the City Council so that we could enter into negotiations with Medica regarding the terms of the contract, including performance guarantees, and that we would then start working with Medica to refine the wellness program and associated rewards, and to develop this transparency solution. We, in HR and Finance, as well as the union members of the Benefit Labor Management Committee, intend to continue our focus on the long-term stability of the plan and will provide periodic updates to elected officials. We will also wish to continue the past, to build on our past work to prepare the city for self-insured medical benefits in the very near future.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. We have a question from Councilmember Palmisano.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for this presentation, and I appreciate that this was a broad committee's work to look and solicit and review these RFPs. I think I'll try to save most of my questions for Ways and Means Committee, but I do have just a couple I wanted to ask you, just to make sure. I understand you said earlier, or at least in the RCA, that a consultant was used. Was it also this independent consultant's perspective that we would save about 3%? I'm just curious how this projection was made or assessed. Was it by Medica, or was it by, was it consistent across the different responses you got?
The fully insured quote of a 3% reduction was, it was the same for Health Partners and Medica.
Right, but the, versus, the 3% savings is based off of a projection of how we would have done in a self-insured.
Right. The projection, well, the projections were based on Medica's initial renewal of 4.6% increase.
Okay.
So when the, sometimes that happens, when you go out for, to do a request for proposal, especially the city doesn't do this often. So we received from Health Partners and Medica, due to marketing this benefit, we received very, very good fully insured rates, and were comparable to about the four to four and a half million dollars in savings that would have occurred if we would have gone with self-insurance.
And I just kind of flagged Ms. Christiansen, because part of what I'm hearing is how confident are we in the 3%, how is that estimated that we will actually realize that savings of the 3%, and I just didn't know if Ms. Christiansen had anything additional to add.
Chair Glynn, Councilmember Palmisano, the, there's always going to be some variability in what's potential savings the city may reap as a result of the renewal quote, you know, because, of course, any claims that are incurred and any changes in coverage that members, being the employees, may choose during open enrollment. So on an apples-to-apples basis, if everybody did exactly the same thing next year that they're doing this year in terms of having single or family coverage, the city may see an overall savings. However, there's, we'll see some variability and uncertainty in what the actual savings may end up being. And again, we, when we're talking about savings between the fully insured and the self-insured, the savings is really from our anticipated cost increase, so it's not necessarily a reduction from today's dollars, it's a reduction from our expectation of where it would have gone.
Yeah, I just, I question how Medica projects what our experience is, and I know they have a vested interest in not losing us as a customer, but also in keeping us as fully insured instead of self-insured. So maybe, could you, Ms. Christiansen, could you further articulate, what do you mean by guaranteed saving? Does this involve any risk sharing or retro rating, or just this reduction in premium?
No, no, there's no, there's no retro rating. It's based, their quote is based upon their current knowledge of the city's census and membership, and their anticipated continuation of our reduced claims and enhanced wellness programs.
Okay. If I, if you could, just one more question. Are we sure, this is a clarification of this discount and the apples-to-apples comparison, does this really assume that our benefits and the employees' coverage stays the same, or did they cut things out, like transplants, obesity surgery? I don't presume so, because that would mean disruption for some people, but that is a way that people tend to skinny out plans, so I just want to ensure that these are the exact same levels of coverage that we've had in the past.
Medica quoted the exact same levels of coverage. It is, the plan is filed with the state currently. With the other carriers, their quotes, there was some differentiation in the benefits they quoted, but with Medica, it really is same plan.
With last year's filed plans.
With last year's filed plans. I also might just state that the initial fully insured renewal that we got was very early in the year, and Medica didn't have a lot of claims experience for 2014 to base that initial renewal on. The claims experience for 2014 is looking very favorable. You would expect that, because there were major plan changes. So I believe, it's my belief, that some of this reduction in the rates is based on that, the more favorable claims experience.
Thank you. I, just my last comment, and I can take the rest of these into Ways and Means Committee, but through this exercise, I just want to make clear that we've explored self-insured versus fully insured options. I guess my own recommendation would be that in three years' time, we look into entering into a risk-sharing agreement as a way to just tiptoe or start entry into this kind of an arrangement. We haven't looked at that through this RFP, or now maybe presuming that through the work of this committee and all of your consideration, we've chosen to stay with Medica and to stay fully insured. Maybe is it in the realm of possibility to look at entering into those kinds of agreements with Medica? I would want to be able to have that flexibility, to have that conversation in Ways and Means Committee.
And, I mean, that is absolutely appropriate. I will just say, by, you know, voting on this right now, we're now taking that, you know, this is an approval to kind of move forward. It's more on the policy piece of moving forward with this fully insured option, with further direction that might come into the monetary aspects and financial questions at Ways and Means, and so.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your help. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for all of your work. It seems like when something's too good to be true, it is. So it was as simple as we said, we don't really want to pay for the fully insured plan, so we're going to explore a self-insured plan, and then they said, "Oh, well, we don't really mean that's what it's going to cost. It's now going to cost exactly what it would cost to move to self-insurance," after we spent a lot of time essentially being convinced by our professional staff that moving to self-insurance was the right thing to do. So I'm just wondering what your thoughts are, you know, maybe I'll have to hear them privately, about this exercise that we've put our staff through, and a good number of people, to make a decision to move to self-insurance, because we felt that that was the best decision in the long run. And now we're saying, "Well, I guess since they matched it, we don't want to do that." I personally love the status quo, so I'm happy with this decision, but I wonder about whether or not it's the best decision for the long run, or we're going to be right back in this place after three years plus two.
Chair Glynn, Councilmember Goodman, I would maybe request that we have this discussion offline at some point. I believe that there are a number of market issues at play here, mainly with the other carriers. But Medica is committed to this as a state maintaining the strategic partnership with the city, and so proposed the lower rates. We had a lot of discussion about moving forward with self-insurance in spite of these, but as stewards of taxpayer funds, we felt that we could not in good conscience move forward with the potential for savings at this point versus guarantee, these kind of guaranteed savings.
Okay. Sounds like we have to have a conversation outside of this room, too, but I really appreciate all your work, and I will tell you, I was drinking your Kool-Aid. I mean, I really felt like moving to self-insure- I mean, I really felt like moving to self-insurance was a thing that we should do, and I was very convinced by our professional staff, so I'm somewhat surprised. But as I said, I, I think we have very good insurance. I don't want to change our system, and I bet there are a lot of people out there like me who feel like this is the major benefit, and, and it's why people get paid less in government, is to have good benefits, and this has to be a good benefit. So, I don't mind not changing. I'm just interested in how we got to this point.
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question for you with regards to this move to self-insurance and then this move back. You know, I know that some of the issues came up with the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority and how if we were to move to self-insurance, that they would be cut off from the insurance process, and they would have to go seek their own insurance. And I, I guess now, I mean, if we're going to move to fully insured, I mean, does that just take the question off the table? I mean, MPHA, we're going to continue business as usual for everybody?
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Yang, there have been ongoing conversations with the MPHA about the potential for them to move into their own benefit plan, which would be necessitated if we were to move to self-insurance. However, because we're not moving to self-insurance, it would not be legally necessary, but the city, as, as a provider of service to its own employees, it is administratively burdensome for the city to continue to have non-city entities included within our, basically our insurance program and to include them in our overall benefit administration. So, I think that was part of the, part of the interest in investigating the option of working with the MPHA and having them move on to their own. It's not legally required because we're not moving to self-insurance at this time, but it's administratively, it's still a positive move.
You know, having said that, there is still an ongoing issue with providing any kind of insurance for entities that aren't part of the city, that aren't legally part of the city. So, we will be working with the independent boards and agencies to help them transition to their own benefit programs. It's my understanding in conversations with leaders from MPHA that they were, they are moving forward. The city has authorized funds to help them with that transition. They're quite a ways down the path towards establishing single employer plans on their own, so.
All right, thank you. Sorry, I've, all right, I'm not seeing further questions. So, the action before us is to approve this authorization to enter into a fully insured contract with Medica as the selected provider of City of Minneapolis Medical Plan benefits for a period of three years, starting January 1st, 2015, with an option to extend the contract for up to two additional one-year periods. And again, this will be referred to Ways and Means as well. So, I will move that action. Is there any further discussion on the motion? See none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye, opposed, and that item is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate the presentation. Next, we have a presentation on open data policy, and I'm going to invite Mr. Dahl to come up and describe to us this proposal.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. In response to last December's staff direction, we are bringing forward today an open data policy for your consideration. We've enlisted the help of several entities, various subject matter experts from the departments, a number of civic technologists from the community, as well as advice and counsel from council members. We established an open data policy working group to work through this, and we've been at it now for several months. But in essence, the policy sets guidelines for determining what data should be made public, how that data is to be made public, and also how that data, that published information should be maintained over time. The working group feels that the policy will benefit the city because it allows, through the release of city's data, it enables the public to use that information to assist in identifying solutions for city challenges and opportunities, to promote innovative strategies for social progress, and will create some economic opportunities within the city as well. Now, there are some base principles that I'd like to convey this morning so that hopefully folks will understand the way the policy is constructed. First of all, there's always a question of exactly what data is to be made or considered to be made open to the public. And in the field, we have a term of structured data or structured information, and that is information that's contained in a database that is uniquely elementized, if you will, put in an element. Think of your address, and, you know, there's the street, and there's the city, and there's the zip code, et cetera. Those are discrete elements. So, hence, things like email, videos, voice recordings, document images, that sort of information is considered unstructured and is not included for consideration to be made public within this policy. Obviously, we also indicate, as is would be appropriate, that all personally identified information or any information that is deemed private by federal statute, state law, or city ordinance is also not to be subject to publication. Now, in, in our efforts to determine what should be a vehicle for doing this is we're, we are asking to, or saying that we're going to establish an open data portal, a place where the public will be able to find this information within 120 days of passage of this policy, and that that, that portal is accessible through the Internet, through the wide, world wide web, and that there will be a catalog so that people can, number one, determine what information is available, and also, if you will, data about the data that's, that is being released, so that people have a context for what that information really represents. There is no timeline, if you will, for all information to be made available, that can be made available publicly, but recognize there will be annual status reports back to council every June on the progress that the city is making. We are setting up, if you will, governance by having the city's chief information officer or designee oversee this entire initiative, and we are asking the departments to contribute an open data coordinator as part of an open data advisory group to help guide their specific departments through the management of their information and the fulfillment of the open data policy. We positioned the city so that, as you're well aware, from time to time, the city either acquires or builds information systems, systems of record, that help departments manage their activities. And we wanted to ensure that as those are acquired or refreshed in the future, that we always seek to have solutions that ensure that we can easily determine and publish information that we feel should be made open and available to the public. So, any contract for those types of information systems, starting in January 1st of 2015, will need to have that as a requirement. And then finally, there's always a question of liability. Because the city can't know in advance or understand how someone might make use of information, we put this information out there for informational purposes only, and that departments, of course, have the right to discontinue availability of, of information based on their department's retention schedules and associated policies, which is normal operating procedure within the city. And with that overview, stand for questions.
Thank you. And first, I, I actually, this wasn't marked on the agenda, so this shows how I forget things when they're not marked on the agenda, but I'm going to turn the chair over to Councilmember Andrew Johnson, as this is really part of the IT Subcommittee. I'm going to ask to be called on, though, because I had a comment and a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, Councilmember Glidden.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for the report, Mr. Dahl. I'll maybe just note that this work arose from a staff direction that was part of last year's budget process at the time, and I had no idea what would happen as a result of policy development, but I did know that there were a large number of cities and states around the, around the country, and you've referred to this in your supporting information, that already had policies and directives of this kind. It's sort of the changing philosophy, I think, of what it means to have sunshine on data within local government and state government and other places. And just on that more personal philosophical note, I, I believe that this is the right direction for the city. As maybe a caveat to that, though, too, and I reference this, this, this is, I think, a, a cultural change, and we need to be respectful of that. I think that the fact that the directive right now doesn't have deadlines is one example of being respectful of how we need to work carefully with departments, have them help lead. We have a variety, as I understand it, of departments, some of which are, you know, questioning what would they really have to put on this open data portal? What would be appropriate? How would they start that? Other departments seem to have things right away they want to do. So, it's a variety of responses, as I think happens in a, in a large organization like this, and I think, again, with culture change, we need to be careful and respectful in working through those issues. And, and I guess part of my question is to you, Mr. Dahl, can you tell us a little bit of what has been that interaction with department heads as you've developed the policy? And also, were there any references that you used? Is there like a common template for doing these policies? Or is this sort of because, is this sort of very unique to Minneapolis? I, I just was a little bit curious about the policy itself.
Yes, Councilmember Glidden. We initially brought this before the department heads in a department head meeting. We hold those monthly. We don't usually have a lot of time to discuss an item there, so we set up a separate meeting, and it was well-attended by the departments, where we went through and discussed this policy and its potential ramifications. One can imagine people would be concerned with, you know, what sort of impact on staff time it might take to, to do this, as well as general issues of misinterpretation of information, et cetera. These are not new issues in the sense that there is a Data Practices Act in Minnesota. We do respond, and we do deliver information today to various folks coming in, seeking that information, and then sometimes we have to react to others' reaction to that same information. So, in, in a lot of respects, it was just getting to understand and for them to, as, as departments, give us some insights into what they perceive, again, could be the ramifications, and get an understanding of it. You're right, it, it is cultural and, to a great degree, but there are a number of departments that, in particular, in the case of, they get many, many data requests today. They would like this information to be out there so they can just point people to it rather than having to recreate and deliver that information many, many times over. And so, they see it as an additional benefit from just an operational standpoint. So, we did talk through it. Now, as far as how did we really come up with the base, if you will, the starting draft of this, is my organization went out and we looked across the country at what others had done. I talked to a number of my colleagues. I'm in a number of organizations of city and county CIOs. I talked to them. I retrieved whatever policy they might have, and we kind of used that as a base and went through all of that and chose out those elements that we felt really were the best, the best of the best. And so, that's what we started with, but it, there was many an iteration of this policy over time through the working group, taking into account the advice and input from department heads, from the city attorney's office specifically, in their typical review of policy, as well as, as I mentioned in talking with some council members as well, so that we hopefully crafted something that can work within our culture and can move the city forward in this area. Because as you mentioned, this is a growing incentive within the country. It's fairly strong in the federal government and the states, less so in counties and cities, but nonetheless, there are a number of people that have struck out and are already there, you know, having thousands of data sets made available to the public from their worlds.
Can I maybe just do one last question here on, on the policy? Is, do you see this as a policy that will get reevaluated, or how do you, again, because it's a new policy for the city, how do you see that, that happening within the city enterprise? Again, just because I know I've gotten questions myself, just, you know, what does it mean? And, and what flexibility? And I think folks, again, want to just make sure we have that good pathway forward for, for what is a change.
Right. Councilmember Glidden, I think there's a few dynamics that are going to drive, and one reason why we have that yearly status report back to council, is to, number one, obviously, as people react to this and they see how it works and can assess what it takes to ensure that we, for instance, determine what information needs to remain private and what can go public, et cetera. So, from an operational standpoint, we're going to learn from that. We're also have to react to what technology does to us in the coming years. There's going to be new, new forms of information potentially. There's going to be new delivery mechanisms, and so, we're going to have to continually reevaluate as those forms or those sources of information evolve and change. You might have heard of, an example would be the Internet of Things, where everything from someone's toaster and refrigerator to their car is collecting information and being, you know, accessible. And so, there's, there is this transition technically that's going on in the world that I think we need to constantly be evaluating to determine how we should evolve. that I think we need to constantly be evaluating to determine how we should evolve the open data policy. And you'll notice in the very back, I believe it's the last section of the policy, we talked specifically about the evolution of the policy and that the expectation is, is that this will need to evolve over time.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. So I just wanted to take a moment here to share my own personal story around open data, but first I want to thank you, and I want to thank the members of the work group, the open data work group, that worked on this draft policy before us. We had representatives from the city's biggest departments there, we had the clerk there, we had our CIO there, I was there, and we also had some outside partners, including Bill Bushy, who I'd like to recognize is here today. He works with Open Twin Cities and eDemocracy, and also Kristin Murray, who is with the UFM's Center for Urban and Regional Affairs. And it was through the collaboration of this work group that we have this today, and it's very exciting to see us poised to be the 16th city in the nation to adopt such a policy. My personal interest in this comes from being a web developer prior to being on the council, being a programmer, and I actually had an opportunity to really get a good win out of open data. The federal government put their budget online in Excel format, which, as Bill and others know, in the development community, isn't exactly ideal, but we were able to take that information out, develop a database around it, and build an entire website that created a concept. What it did is it took the federal budget and it broke it down into a receipt. It made it so you could enter how much money you made a year, and you would see exactly where your tax dollars went. And the theory behind this is that just looking at billions and trillions of dollars, that's unrelatable. But if you break it down and you know that $46 is going to NASA, $32 is going to the Afghan security forces, it starts to give you a relatability and the ease of discussing and weighing where the money's going. So we created this concept, we put it out there, my friend Louis Garcia and I, and within the first day, it had over 100,000 hits on the website. A ton of people were going there, caught the attention of Google. Google reached out and said, "We want to partner with you, and we want to find other ways to visualize the federal budget, to make it easier for people to understand." There are some really cool concepts. In fact, I actually have at my house a clock, that somebody physically made a clock, and it shows your eight-hour workday. And of that workday, how many minutes, how many seconds are spent to each federal department, and how much of that money you get to keep. So some really cool concepts that help make spending relatable and ultimately get citizens more engaged. And so this concept, it ended up being broadly viewed and picked up. In fact, President Obama mentioned it in his State of the Union address, and a .gov website was formed. As a result of this, citizens have a better idea of where their federal money is being spent and are more engaged around conversation and empowered to have conversations about that. And we have these opportunities here in this city as well. This is really an opportunity to leverage data and leverage the passion of developers, the passion of outside organizations, to help the city better achieve its goals. I know we looked at St. Paul, and one of the things they did, they took their shape files around where storm drains were on streets. And this year, they put that out there on a website, and people were able to go out there with their icebreakers and chisel away and open up their storm drains. And so the streets were essentially no longer flooded at intersections. So it enabled citizens to supplement the work of public works so that the city didn't have to spend as much money doing it. And in fact, with our police department, we've seen that as well. When they have the Bear Analytics tool that they launched, they had a drop in Data Practice Act requests. So they had to devote less city resources to that. In the grand scheme of things, open data, this open data portal, is about us achieving our goals within this city, doing a better job achieving them, doing a better job collaborating with outside organizations, and at the same time, reducing resource needs internally around these Data Practice Act requests. And ultimately, too, it's about being a more transparent and more accountable city government for all of our residents and our business owners. And so I thank you, I thank the work group for coming forward with this, and I'm very excited to see us get this implemented. With that, I see in queue, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I obviously, I support the purpose and scope of the open data policy. I had a public forum dedicated to that topic, Director Dahl was there, it was a lively conversation. I have forward for consideration some tweaks that do not in any way modify the spirit or the implementation of the core components of the policy moving forward, but there are language modifications that I think are clarifying and reassuring to the implications to the other participating departments moving forward. I think it reinforces that we're not broaching a situation where one department and one policy dictates the budgeting and staffing directives of another department. That would be a very unprecedented gesture, if that's the intent of the language, which I don't think, and I've always been reassured that's not the purpose of the policy. So the minor friendly language thing signal that we will continue along an iterative process, which has been the spirit of what got us here today, moving forward. And I know Director Dahl has seen the language, and again, I move that as a friendly amendment to the policy before us, and I think it's all been handed out and redlined. It's a total of five word changes to the policy, item four, five, and section four, roles and responsibilities. And where there's language struck, enforcement to management will assign to shall consider, and then adding recommended guidelines, all are modified in that spirit.
Thank you, Councilmember Reich, and I'll take that as a motion to approve and implement the open data policy with the changes that you proposed. Councilmember Glidden.
Thanks, and I think I hadn't realized, it was right in front of me, so I'm just digging down and have it right here. I didn't know if, Mr. Dahl, do you have a copy in front of you?
I don't have one in front of me.
I'm going to actually hand you, would you come up here? Because I might want to just ask you a couple of questions. I think that Mr., Mr. Councilmember, Mr. Councilmember Reich has updated this with some redline, so you'll be able to see him. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions and maybe just give you a moment to take a look. There's, I think there's only like three places where there's a few word changes, am I right?
And just for clarification, I did review this with him earlier today.
Okay, okay. I just, when he's answering questions, I'm sure he likes to see a copy. So, so, let's see here, including development and manage, so item, the update on paragraph C4, to me, does not look like a major change, a minor word change. On item number five, I will say, this issue is one I've heard about from others, just what is that implication of assigning an open data coordinator? And I might just ask a question about the implication of the change, which, which may be just, just fine, I just want to make sure I'm understanding that implication of the change. And I think the concern I've heard, and I don't know if this is the intent of Councilmember Reich's moving this, the concern I've heard is, is, you know, more along the lines of staff time, those kinds of, there may be some other concern that I'm not understanding. What's the staff time? How much time would it be? Those kinds of things. I guess on the other hand, just my question is, if there's not a designated person, regardless of whether there's maybe a message that's more about flexibility around what that designated person would do, you know, I think maybe another question is, do you want to require someone from another department to attend meetings and those kinds of things? But what would be the implication of not having a designee? Or what's the importance of doing that? And then what would be the implication of not designating them? Just, I think, because part of it is making sure there's a way that you can talk to other departments, and I don't want to undercut that ability to talk to other departments in a clear line of communication, but still allow the flexibility of how they're participating, knowing, again, some are gung ho and some are more cautious.
Yes. Councilmember Glidden, obviously, if a department chooses not to participate and to not have a data coordinator, one of the things that we've recognized in the IT department is, you know, how departments manage their information, their data, is a very important, even more important function over time. And whether you're a small department or a large department, people do it in various different ways. And so I think one of the downsides of a department who doesn't participate, again, is they don't get the experiences of others who are trying to manage their information over time. They're, obviously, their voice might not be heard as much as we do evolve this over time. We obviously, in IT, will be pushing out this to all of our usual contacts within departments when we talk about anything that has to do with IT in general, or data specifically, or information management specifically. So it's, you know, we will take every step to try to keep people informed. We just feel that, you know, there's a, I think there's a general feeling in the city that I like, and that is, people feel normally that they want to have an opportunity to participate, to have their thoughts considered, their direction, or, for lack of a better word, their, their sense of what direction or actions or policies or whatever that the city should be dealing with and how those should be created. And so we often, in IT, sometimes get accused of doing things on our own and not including others. And so we thought it was very important for people to have that say, to have a process by which they do that. I would hope, I, I know some departments will participate, I would hope all of them will. If they don't, then, again...
I, okay, I have, I think that gives me a flavor. I actually have a, and again, I just saw this right now, so I have a suggestion that I'm just going to, to read and see, this is, you know, again, it's odd when we're committee of the whole, but committees do workshops sometimes, and so that's what we're doing. But the change proposed by Councilmember Reich is that on number, on C5, it would say, instead of saying, "Each department will assign an open data coordinator who shall," and then there's some enumerated duties. The proposed change is, "Each department shall consider assigning an open data coordinator who shall, blah, blah, blah." My proposed, maybe, change to that is, "Each department will identify an open data coordinator who may." And that's where I think the flexibility perhaps comes in, but I, I don't want to, because again, I think if someone doesn't come to this meeting, I don't know what Mr. Dahl is going to do anyway. But track him down, and, you know, and I, I think that's where I'm assuming the desired flexibility is, as opposed to identifying a communications point, where at least then you have somewhere to send the information, offer the opportunity to participate, and then if the department decides, you know, that's not where we want to spend our time today, or however that works, then that's where the department has the flexibility. And so I just, that's why, I think that seems to forward the spirit of what you are suggesting, Councilmember Reich. And again, we have not discussed this personally, this is, so it's, you know, I'm just looking down the line here, but still doesn't break that communications chain and then that opportunity for participation when the department does decide, we want to make sure we at least know what's going on and are, have an opportunity to participate when we think that time is important.
I would concur that it, it keeps us from broaching what I think is a very significant principle of not having policies that, from one department dictating the staffing and budget of another. And so I believe that you've accomplished that with your modification, and it continues the iterative spirit of which created this policy and how we want to move forward. So I concur with that modification and accept it as a friendly amendment to my suggested amendment.
Okay. And I don't know if the clerk heard, then it looks like we have some nodding heads, so I just wanted to make sure, since I read that that was clear, and so I'm going to assume Councilmember Johnson might incorporate that into the motion then, if that is acceptable.
That is a fair assumption, Council Vice President Glidden. We will incorporate that into the motion, and with that, I also see Councilmember Bender in queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to speak in favor of this policy, and I really appreciate Council Vice President's suggested changes, I think that addresses some concerns. I was worried about leaving out some of our important departments in this work. I received a number of communications about open data from constituents in Ward 10 since taking office, and I was very pleased to be able to send them over to Councilmember Johnson's office, as he was leading on this, on this busy first six months of our term here. And so I really appreciate the work that's gone into this. And again, I think this is really speaking to the things that we heard earlier today about engaging a new generation of Minneapolis. Many of my constituents are finding it challenging to interact with the city's current engagement, and I think this is a really important way of opening up government to more people. I think this is a moderate first step that reflects the status quo and the challenge of changing culture within government, and I think it's, I hope it will continue to move forward from here, engaging the important departments of our city and making sure we're bringing everyone along as we go. I've, I think open data will result in greater efficiency of our government. I think we've seen an example of that. We are the only major city in the US that doesn't make our health inspections publicly available, and through an open data request, that information was requested, and I think a person in the private sector, as a volunteer effort, put together a website so that now people in Minneapolis can find that data. I think that's just one example of what happens when we allow our data to become public, that sometimes individuals are able to move faster than our departments, and that they should be able to do that, that that is a great service to our community. So I think that we will see not only efficiency in saving staff time responding to data requests, but we'll be able to see the creativity and contributions of our very smart residents of Minneapolis. And so I'm really excited about this change, and again, thanks everyone for your work.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Bender. With that, I see no one else in queue, so we do have a motion for approving and implementing the open data policy as amended with Council Vice President Glidden's modifications. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstain? The motion carries. Thank you. And I will turn the chair back over to Council Vice President Glidden.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Johnson. Well, the last thing that we have are reports of committees, and just in light of time, I'll urge chairs to reflect what are some of the key issues before their committees, since it is 10 minutes to noon. First, we have Community Development and Regulatory Services with Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just first want to say, I thought that the committee of the whole meeting was extremely well-managed and a very good use of our time, so thank you for packing a lot into a meeting and doing it very efficiently. We have 11 or 12 items on our agenda tomorrow. I will note that the biggest item is the approval of the appointment of Craig Taylor to take over as the Executive Director of the MCDAs and Director of CPED for a two-year term. The other items on the agenda include a number of brewery taproom license ordinances. I will note that item number four, which is the 42nd Avenue Ballroom item, has, is going to be removed from the agenda. The fee has been paid, but they're not asking to renew their license, and we're doing a variety of other things. There's one bond issuance, we're accepting some grants, as well as submitting some grants. So with that, I'll answer questions on items one through 13.
All right, seeing no questions. Next, we have Health, Environment, and Community Engagement with Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. We have two relatively minor actions that we're bringing forward. One has to do with approving $44,000 of Hennepin County's old NRP funds to support transportation engagement in the Sumner and Heritage Park neighborhood areas, and the other is just a resolution authorizing grant agreements with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency.
All right, thank you for that report. And again, seeing no questions, we will go to Intergovernmental Relations, where there is one item. It is a proposed charter amendment relating to municipal filing fees, and this would be our approval of ballot language. So I encourage councilmembers to take a look at this, and just a reminder, this is just a majority vote of the council to move the ballot language forward. Next, we have, oh, all right, someone, my name's on there. Next, we have Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management, with that committee's chair, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have three items...
We have three items. The first item is in agreements with the University of Minnesota and the Minneapolis PD to provide bomb detection services for the Minnesota Vikings football games in 2014. The second is to authorize a contract with the MPHA in the amount of $108,825 for Sergeant Investigator. The third item is to authorize a contract with Echo in the amount of $54,750 for the If You See Something, Say Something public awareness campaign.
All right, thank you for that report. Next, we have Transportation, Public Works with that chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The committee will be forwarding 10 items for approval at the full council meeting on Friday. The two highlights that I would point out are item six, the yard waste processing, is authorized execution of a three-year contract with specialized environmental technology incorporated for yard waste processing for 100% of the city's yard waste volume, with the option of adding source-separated organics processing should the citywide organics processing be initiated. And item nine, which is passage of resolution increasing the appropriation for the Cedar Avenue sidewalk modification project by $400,000 from the Capital Improvement Fund due to increased project costs resulting from bids received higher than the original cost estimate, and given the scale of that project and the importance of the community, I thought I'd highlight that. Stand for questions on any items, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I am not, I'm not seeing any. And finally, we have Ways and Means with that chair, Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ways and Means will have 12 items for your consideration on Friday. I think they're all fairly routine, including just two legal settlements, some acceptance of various donations and gifts, implementation of some contracts related to IT that are all within the budget, so there's no new appropriation or expenditures required. We do have, do wish to highlight, we have resolutions approving two collective bargaining agreements, one with the fire chiefs and one with the Emergency Communications Supervisors Unit, and highlight Nicollet Mall reconstruction, where we're authorizing the release of an RFP for financing options for the Nicollet Mall reconstruction, and probably be deleting the 12th item from the agenda, just a clerical issue in that we've previously taken action on that item. So item number 12 will probably be asked to be deleted from the agenda. Happy to answer any other questions people may have.
All right, I am not seeing any questions. I will just note in terms of announcements that after our council meeting this Friday, August 1st, we will then adjourn to meet on August 14th, 2014, 11:00 AM, for the purpose of receiving Mayor Hodges' 2015 budget address. And we do have, is that, Councilmember Gordon, are you in queue?
Yes, I just wanted to give a quick heads-up warning that I've been working with some of my colleagues on a resolution related to the Minnesota sports facility and Bird Safe stadium design, and I'll be forwarding that to all council members later this afternoon. If anybody has any questions, I'll be around.
I'll look forward to seeing that. Okay, and I believe with that, we have concluded with our business, and I always look at the clerk here, but yes, and so we are adjourned. Thank you very much.